All right, if you're ready Nancy, let's go ahead and get started. This is Kelsey Burgland speaking, I'm the Director of Events and Marketing, and I'm just here to help Nancy moderate and get through this.
Good evening, welcome to the Arabian Horse Association Town Hall. I'm coming to you from my home in California with my new normal of physical distancing, although I must admit that my pets have not yet learned this skill. I made some notes to keep me on track, so if I stumble, please bear with me. This is a new world for us and that we currently live in. And this Town Hall is a new format for both me and for AHA. I lost my... We hope that we can do this again to keep you all informed. And I can tell you for one thing for sure, we don't have all the answers. This is an unprecedented time for us. And keep in mind, it makes me keep in mind a quote from Aristotle. Yes, I read Aristotle. "Patience is bitter, but its fruit is sweet." We have an amazing group of people that are dedicated to balancing the needs of our association, our members, those who make their living in this industry, our owners and our breeders. This balance is difficult to find, and it's thanks to this dedicated group of people that we are navigating through this time. I'd like to introduce the Emergency Response Team for our Arabian Horse Association. Secretary Jan Decker, Treasurer Dave Corning, Vice President-at-Large Lisa Blackstone, Vice President Deborah Johnson, Mediate Past President Cynthia Richardson, myself President, Competition Advisory Chair Jim Hitt, Education and Evaluation Commission Chair Mary Jane Brown, Arabian Professional and Amateur Association President John Ryan, National Events Operations Chair Cindy Clinton, Judges and Stewards Commissioners Stan "The Iron Man" Maury, Director of Marketing and Events Kelsey Burgland, Senior Director of Competitions Leslie Lockard, and our Executive Vice President Glenn Petty. The format for this evening will be as follows. First, to update you on the statuses of what has been done so far in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and its effect on our members, owners, trainers, clubs, and regions. Then we will be responding to questions submitted for this Town Hall. Remember Aristotle, patience is bitter, but its fruit is sweet. The Emergency Response Team was established March 12th, 2020, the day the pandemic was announced nationally to make sure that we are keeping engaged with the ever-changing situation that is COVID-19. This team established four areas of emphasis to guide them. These are used to keep the team focused on what priorities were established. These areas of emphasis and priority order are: Establishing confidence with our members; Fiscal responsibility to AHA; Establishing a plan for our horse shows; Plan for recovery of our shows, rides, and the industry. AHA has a long history of active committee, commission, and board structure that we can use to our advantage by empowering them to help with decision-making and the development of new and unique ways to address the issues that have been created by this pandemic. We also have a strong relationship with our sister breed organizations and the locations at which we hold our events. We are in constant contact with all of these groups and have submitted to the recommendations that we have received from you to those groups for their review. I'd like to briefly go through the timeline of leadership team actions, some of which have been superseded by the subsequent actions. But this is to keep you informed on the actions taken and when they were taken. The Board of Directors completely recognizes that shows, rides are the lifeblood of our membership. Included in that are the trainers, horse transporters, officials, and show personnel, unless we not forget those at home that take care of our beloved animals. We realize that we cannot have horse shows or endurance and competitive trail rides without owners. And local shows and rides and regional shows and rides are the lifeblood of the local economies. National events are one of the association's main source of income. As a national association, we could have immediately eliminated the qualifications for the AHA national events. But we were also taking into account the economics of the local and regional events and their effect of their elimination on the local and regional level personnel and the economies. So here's the timeline for your reference. I went through this and was amazed at how short of timeframe things have actually been. So on March 11th, the World Health Organization declared that the coronavirus outbreak can be characterized as a pandemic. On March 12th, the Arabian Horse Association established an Emergency Response Team. The team is empowered to make decisions regarding qualifications for the AHA regionals and national events. Since that time, this team has met daily. On March 13th, President Trump declares a state of emergency. Also on March 13th, USCF put in place suspension of all USCF-owned events and point accumulation for USCF Horse of the Year Awards. That suspension was scheduled to continue through April 16th. It has since been extended to May 3rd. March 13th was a busy day, and if you remember, it was also Friday the 13th. Also March 13th, the Board of Directors approved the following with an announcement to the membership being an email blast and on social media, that AHA shows that chose to go forward would be supported, but they must create a health and safety plan and close the show to any public attendance. That all state, local, and national government requires must be strictly adhered to. Remember, this was March 13th, this all came out. AHA shows that wish to reschedule for later in 2020 or 2021 will have all fees passed to that rescheduled show. Any AHA show wishing to go forward as a one-day or value show instead of a USCF-approved show would be changed without fee. Any AHA show that wishes to combine, local or regional, the process is already in place to do so, and the AHA staff would help managers through this process. Show secretaries right now can contact Leslie Lockard at 303-696-4521. At that time, regional qualifications for shows up to May 10th were waived and national qualification point requirements for 2020 were rolled back to the 2019 levels. Again, this all happened on March 13th. Things have changed since then. During the week of March 16th, staff created a COVID-19 page on the AHA website to have one location for all information about the pandemic. The Budget and Finance Committee met to review the possible changes to our finances affected by COVID-19, including the loss of income from both local and regional shows. Communications and contacts were made directly to Nash Local Show Management to enable the office to keep up to date on the cancellation of local shows. To date, I believe 95% of all shows through May 1st have either been canceled or postponed. It may have moved to 100%, but I've been away from my phone for a little bit. All staff travel was canceled unless absolutely necessary. This included the Registration Commission's Spring Meeting. In addition, all nonessential capital expenditures have been deferred or canceled. During the week of March 23rd, the leadership of the Arabian Horse Association made the following changes within the building and in relation to our members. Funds allocated for staff raises and 401K matching have been eliminated effective immediately. The hiring of an Executive Vice President for the Arabian Horse Association will be delayed. After Glenn Petty's retirement on June 30th, the Executive Committee has agreed to step up and will be working with senior staff to ensure that the day-to-day activities of the association are still being addressed in an efficient way. The 2020 August Board of Directors meeting has been changed from an in-person to a Zoom conference to alleviate the expenses to AHA and to the individual regions that are affected by this pandemic. No money will be spent from the Half Arabian Designated Fund. The monies from this fund are used by the Market Development Panel to promote the Half Arabian Horse. The Judges and Stewards in-person school and seminar will be canceled for 2020. The Judges and Stewards Commissioners Office is working on alternative web-based education for our officials and will be working with USCF to request extensions on license maintenance requirements. Travel expenditures for staff and volunteers of the Arabian Horse Association must now be approved by the Executive Vice President or myself effective immediately. Officials and staff at our national events have been instructed to hold off purchasing of travel for those events until the travel and event restrictions are lifted. The Executive Committee of the Arabian Horse Association must now approve the travel for the president. We believe these actions will save AHA approximately $300,000 during the upcoming fiscal year, which begins tomorrow. Also during the week of March 23rd, in addition to the internal business cost savings, the Board voted to waive all regional qualifications for 2020. Yesterday, on March 30th, the Emergency Response Team waived all qualifications for the 2020 Youth National Show. Going forward, the Emergency Response Team is continuing to meet daily to review the next steps based upon facts given by our government. Our staff is currently working from home per Colorado law, but they are ready to serve you for any of your breed association needs. They have designated a schedule. We have designated a schedule relating to the decisions and qualifications of national events. These are considered no later than dates, which means a decision could come and may well come prior to that date. As our distance nationals is not scheduled until well into the fall, we have not included it in our timeline for decisions right now. So, May 20th was our original date for Youth Nationals to determine and make a decision on waiving qualifications. As you already know, this decision to waive qualification has already been announced. June 20th, the Canadian Nationals will... We will have a determination of qualification requirements for that show, which is two months prior to the event. July 20th will be Sport Horse and US Nationals, which is two months prior to Sport Horse and three months prior to the US Nationals. We are currently working with our financial institution to submit an application for an SBA loan grant that has been outlined... Sorry, sorry folks, that has been outlined in the Recent Care Act. Now specifically, the status of Youth Nationals as of today. Based upon the intention of the NRHA to plan to go forward with their very prestigious Derby show that is held in the same facility as our Youth Nationals, we are encouraged that that show should be able to go forward in its current state and time. But there are no guarantees. The status of Canadian Nationals as of today. Currently, the Canadian government has no estimated date for reopening their borders. So we really have no knowledge of the status of the Canadian National Show. We are in contact with the brand and facility multiple times per week, and as soon as we know of a change, we will alert our members. The show commissions are meeting to create models and develop ideas on how we can move forward using some possibly very creative reconfigurations of their shows based on various possibilities. As part of the American Horse Council and the ASAE, which is the American Society for Association Executives, that is a mouthful, we are part of a larger group working to lobby the US government for our association and our membership to be included in parts of all or any new funding available, specifically relating to nonprofits, independent contractors, associations, and agricultural organizations. Like everyone, we're tracking the status of the success of physical distancing to determine the effect it will continue to have on both our regionals and possibly eventually national events. Stan Maury, our Judges and Stewards Commissioner, will be holding a Town Hall in this or a similar format to go into more detail on the plans for our judges' education and some of the plans that have been previously in the works to bring more education to an online platform. Please look for an announcement of his Town Hall. As part of working to improve our communication, we will be partnering with some of the other media outlets to ensure that our communications are reaching the highest number of people in the most efficient way. And although it's called social distancing, I prefer to call it physical distancing, as we must continue to be social, but in very different ways. I urge you, if you are not already practicing physical distancing, please do so. It is the only way to flatten the curve of this very dangerous virus. Now, we've received quite a number of great questions, and some are very specific and others are similar in focus. Prior to the questions, I must say, we do not have all the answers, but we will do our best to give you the best answer as of today, March 31st, 2020. So the first group of questions relates to the qualifications and the status of national events. And this question is from multiple sources. Kelsey's going to read the questions and then I will give you my best answer. Kelsey?
Perfect. So, like Nancy had said, we are answering some of these questions in a bundle just because many people submitted the same type of questions who are trying to most efficiently host this webinar. So our first question was, if it was possible to waive regional and national qualifications this year? And will the qualifications for Sport Horse Nationals 2020 be removed?
So currently, all regional qualifications have been waived. Youth National qualifications have also been waived. And the remaining national show qualification requirements are still under review by the Emergency Response Team. Kelsey?
Are you considering waiving qualifications for Nationals if more shows are canceled? Are you considering how the 2021 national classes may be modified for horses that have aged out, such as classes like Futurities, Maturities, Junior Horse, in the event that the 2020 shows are canceled? And what is AHA doing to subsidize the financial impact of COVID-19 in terms of show fees?
As I stated previously, the 2020 Regional and Youth National qualifications have been waived. The National Shows and the Futurity/Maturity Commissions will be tasked with determining changes to 2021 should there be a cancellation of a national event. We are monitoring all the facilities that host our events and the other associations that have events at the same locations. For local or regional shows that have canceled, the show sponsor will be the determining factor on how credits or refunds are handled for their event.
So the next question is in relation to Youth Nationals. How far out does a call need to be made on whether or not to have it or to cancel it?
As we said before, we're hopeful that our Youth National Event is... will be going forward with the announcement of the NRHA going forward with their Derby Horse Show in June. Unless the status of this... until the status of these horse shows is clear, it's tough to give a definitive answer to this. However, going forward in this time of the pandemic, we will try to make sure that whomever wants to show can show. At this point, we hope to move an event or combine it with another event versus canceling it.
The possibility of regional qualification points remaining valid until the following year? And/or are we considering requiring shows to have youth classes on Saturday and Sunday? Or a solution for the cost of shows?
This is a great question. The point qualifications for 2020 can be reviewed once we get through the active COVID-19 virus event. Regarding scheduling classes on Saturday and Sunday, this is not directly related to COVID-19 pandemic and would actually be a question for your local shows. Cost of shows can be a very tough one, as the cost to host shows has increased as well. This is a longer-term issue with a longer-term answer.
Is there an option to revisit the rule and allow the select rider to show in their age group or open up the maturity and jackpot US Nationals for this year?
I'm forwarding this question to the US National Show Commission for their review. They will be meeting soon after this Town Hall. However, this question is currently not COVID-19 specifically related, unless something changes with other national events. Stay tuned.
So, the next five questions were all submitted in a cluster. So, they're asking to consider waiving all of the qualifications for national shows. It might seem early, but what is the harm in making this call now? For those who are worried that if national qualifications are waived, no one will waive a class... no one will show at a Class A or Regional Show, I say that these people are categorically wrong and that the vast majority of competitors will absolutely show as both prep for Nationals and because they just love to show. Whenever we are able to show again, I know that those can afford it. We'll absolutely support the shows.
As I stated previously, we're balancing the needs of local economies that benefit from an event held within their area and the needs of our membership. The qualifications for regionals have been waived, as well as for Youth Nationals. And the Emergency Response Team is meeting daily to review if and when other national events have qualifications waived. Sometimes this team meets multiple times in one day because things change so fast. I agree, once the horse shows are open and people have a place to go, they will come. But we are working together with the Emergency Response Team to determine when qualifications should be waived for other national events.
So the next question is in regards to Youth Nationals and Canadian Nationals. If they are canceled for this year, 2020, would we allow all youth competitors an additional year to compete in their applicable age groups?
We have this on the agenda to discuss should youth or the Canadian National Events be canceled. Be assured that we are looking at this in many different ways with many different models for success.
The next question is a little bit along the same lines. Regarding Canadian and US Nationals, if they are canceled this year, would adult amateurs have an additional year to compete in their age groups? And also, would horses be able to compete in their eligible maturity classes, such as AEP, AWPA, AHPA, Junior and Futurity Classes?
Essentially, would you reset the clock and pretend 2020 never happened?
Correct.
So, those that know me well personally would know that I wish 2020 would have turned back about five hours into the first of the year. So, as with question number two, we have it on the agenda to discuss the national events and if they're canceled. And this would require obviously a complete reconfiguration of the remaining events. And it's a model that has not yet been created. However, as we move through the spring, we will be creating a model around these possibilities. And again, we will try to build it so people can come.
So, the next question is more regarding the 2021 and 2022 competition years. So, would we consider any regional and Class A points earned this year, assuming that those competitions would be good for an additional two years just due to the economic fallout from COVID-19?
This is a suggestion that I believe we will definitely present as we get closer to the 2021 year. It actually depends on how many shows were really held to determine if the qualifications should be extended. If there were no local and regional shows held, then probably, most likely, we need to extend qualifications for another year, since there was no way to get qualifications in 2020, the year we'd like to forget so far.
So, if the possibility is there that Youth Nationals is canceled for this year, would we allow those youth classes, or at least some youth classes, to be held at US Nationals?
Yes, sorry, yes. And in this question, there was a statement, and I think it answered its own question. In the question, there was a statement that said, "This is an extraordinary year, and extraordinary actions will have to be taken to try to salvage it for the horse show world." And I couldn't have said it better myself. We are in an extraordinary year, and we intend to take extraordinary actions.
The next question is along the same lines too. This person that submitted this question is wondering if we, as an organization and community, should consider holding one large, all-inclusive national championship, such as Scottsdale? And the people would come from everywhere to participate. So Scottsdale does a great job of doing it all. Why don't we lift all qualifications and get everyone to come together later this year in November, maybe when it's safe for everyone to show there? Kind of like the Pinto World does, like a huge national championship.
So I want you to be assured that the Arabian Horse Association is open to any creative possibilities to keep the Arabian community engaged and active. We are treading in untried territory, and first and most importantly, we want all of our Arabian owners to be safe and healthy. Going forward in this time of COVID-19, we will try to make sure that whomever wants to show can show. And we will do our best to be as creative as possible. As was said previously, as needed, we will get creative to make the best national events for Arabian Horse community.
The next person that submitted the question is wondering if the borders will be open in time for Canadian Nationals?
As of today, March 31st, we have no information on the Canadian government on a timeline for reopening their borders. We're in constant contact with our facility representative and should hopefully be one of the first to know if a change may occur.
If US Nationals is canceled, what will happen to the AWPA class where horses are four years old? What will happen to the Junior Horse Classes and also the Maturity Classes?
We are sincerely hoping that we can go forward with our national events and hope that the events held within are still moving forward. The show commissions are scheduling meetings to develop plans and models. And subsequently, the leadership of the various events that are hosted within these national events will be held. Specific questions relating to the AWPA, AHPA, and AEP should be directed to the leadership of those associations.
For this year, would we consider offering a special regarding achievement award points from past years?
I have not discussed that yet, but thank you for that suggestion. I put it on the agenda for future meetings. And reading through the questions, I think I answered this later with a question that was submitted from our Competitions Department. So hang on for another answer, maybe.
Okay, what kind of internal cuts is AHA making to offset the loss of revenue?
As I stated in my introduction, the funds allocated for staff raises and 401K matching have been eliminated. We have delayed the hiring of a new Executive Vice President, and the Executive Committee will be working with the senior staff to ensure the day-to-day activities of the association are still being addressed in an efficient way. The August Board Meeting will be done by Zoom. No money will be spent on the Half Arabian Designated Fund. The Judges and Stewards School and Seminar in-person has been canceled for 2020. Travel expenditures must be approved by the EVP and/or the president. The EVP, I'm sorry, the Executive Committee will approve my travel. And with these actions alone, we believe we can save AHA approximately $300,000 during the upcoming fiscal year, which begins tomorrow. In addition, the Budget and Finance Committee are reviewing the next steps that may be necessary to ensure our continued operations. Currently, we're working with our bank on an SBA loan grant based on the CARE Act. If you don't know what the CARE Act is, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act is a significant piece of legislation that seeks to provide approximately $2 trillion worth of... As part of this new legislation, the Small Business Administration has created nearly $350 billion loan program called Paycheck Protection Program. Say that three times fast. This program is available for businesses with 500 or fewer employees to help with payroll, rent, utilities, healthcare costs, and other expenses. The SBA has also expanded a number of their existing programs, including the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. We are in daily contact with our financial institution to make sure we have our applications submitted for this possible opportunity. In addition, we are working on a way to help our members navigate through this application process as well.
Why was the membership not asked if they wanted to pay an extra $25 on their entry fees for Nationals or for Regionals? I apologize, for recovery and... And for how long will this be in effect? Where does this money go and how will it be spent?
The $25 per horse, per region recovery charge will be in place only for the 2020 regional show season. It is intended to offset the fees that AHA is normally paying for every local and regional show held each year. The recommendation came from the Budget and Finance Committee, who are charged with the financial health of the business. The opinion of that group, the emergency response team, and it was the unanimous opinion of the Board of Directors, that this was the least invasive way to help with a significant loss of income from the cancellation of both local and regional shows. The loss of income represents approximately $170,000 that would never be recovered. It was the opinion of the Board of Directors with input from various members that $25 is a very low cost for participation in a regional level show. It will not cover the losses of the, that the association will incur, but after much discussion and consideration, the Board of Directors felt that the charge must be kept as low as possible. The fee will go to cover the cost of running the association, with a portion to go to the Judges and Stewards Commissioners Office to offset the cost of running that office, as they too have no income due to the loss of horse shows.
Will AHA remain financially soluble if the national championship horse shows are required to be canceled for this year?
This will put an extreme strain on AHA, as it will on those that participate at national shows. We will survive with the help of all members. AHA is all of our members. It's not just the leadership that's on this call, and it had been working every single day to keep the association running. We have many great minds working on financials, models based on various possibilities.
Are there plans to institute a per-horse charge at the national championships, similar to what was announced for regional shows?
At this point in time, no. However, that is not out of the question, depending upon the financial modeling.
The next reader would like to, some understanding on what the half Arabian designated fund is and why we won't be spending money from there.
The money, money from the, money from the half Arabian, the half Arabian registration fund money is money that's earmarked from the registration fees collected from the half Arabian registrations for promotion of the half Arabian horse through the market development panel. For the near future into fiscal year 2021, which again begins tomorrow, the funds will not be spent until such time as we are on stable ground financially. This is planned only for fiscal year 21.
Are there any contingency plans being made in the event that youth nationals is canceled, Canadian nationals is canceled, or the border is so close, or US nationals is canceled? What financial impact would these have to AHA?
First, let me state that we are so fortunate that those previous, previously in leadership have been so good at creating budgets that have been very conservative and ultimately proved very close to reality. This will enable us to create models with projected outcome based on differing circumstances. With that said, if our national events do not go forward, we will be severely impacted, as will our customers and the people who count on the income from those events. Our Budget and Finance Committee, the Executive Committee, and the leadership of this association are in the process of creating models, including the possibility of cancellation or the preferred postponement, postponement. And the national event commissions are meeting to determine some creative configurations for all our national events based upon facility availability and governmental restrictions. The next group, oh, go ahead, sorry. You say it.
Okay. Um, the next questions that we have submitted are from judges or related to the judges' school and seminar. So, the first, they're both related. The first one is about judges' school, and a judge that was trying to get their hours in at this year's shows. With the quarantine deadline getting extended indefinitely, is there any other way to get the hours to count towards getting the card? And additionally, we had a judge write in that asked, "What is the solution for judges' school regarding those who are supposed to test for their judges license this year?"
As I said, the judges' school and seminar will not be held in person this year. I spend a lot of time in other breeds and other disciplines, and this is not one that is unique to us. Many other divisions are having issues with the fact that their events that they're supposed to be getting hours at are canceled or postponed. But since this is, the issue's relating to licensing and testing and education of judges and stewards have many aspects, the Judges and Stewards Commissioners Office will be hosting one of these town halls for our current and prospective judges to help them navigate through the USEF requirements and changes, and the testing of national and regional level, and to make, testing of national, for the national and regional level, and to make sure our judges are impacted in the least way as possible. Stan, did I mention he's the Iron Man? Mori has tentative plans to address our AHA members in the near future using the similar video format.
The next question is in relation to convention. Are there not more cost-effective ways to have our convention that would save AHA and the club's money?
You're, this is a great question. We're currently in contact with the Silver Legacy Hotel relating to cancellation costs, should we need to configure our convention differently. Our staff, in concert with Vice President Deborah Johnson, are working on taking the convention to an online format, should that be required. Currently, we're still planning to have an in-person convention to help us get back on track to a more social and business interaction in person. Online's great when necessary, but it has its drawbacks in relation to parts of the organization, organization coming together collectively to help move us forward.
So, our next group of questions was submitted through our competitions department and in the office. The first question is, "If I can't attend shows this year and have paid into some of the horse and member enrollment programs, like achievement awards specifically, can the fees be transferred to next year?"
Yes. If you're unable to take advantage of the programs such as achievement awards, horse and amateur, USD, USDF All-Breed Dressage Rider Awards, and all the other programs, just notify the competitions department toward the year's end, and they can transfer your funds to 2021.
"I might not be able to make my sweepstakes deferred bill payment that is coming due. I don't want my horse dropped and the money forfeited. What can I do about that?"
So, what you do is you contact Cheryl Holloway, and I'll spell this out. It's Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L dot H-O-L-L-O-W-A-Y at ArabianHorses.org, or you can call her at 303-696-4526, and she will work with you to set up either a delayed payment schedule or if you have to make lower payments. As long as you let us know what's going on, we will work with you.
"What is the possibility of creating a virtual horse show and receiving points for offering free online horse training classes?"
So, this is a great question. There are a lot of online virtual horse shows rolling out. We are actually going to roll out a program for training classes with Arabian judges. This program will enable the participants to submit a video and then get coaching on that video from licensed Arabian judges. The program will have a nominal, nominal charge and will be available to members of the Arabian Horse Association. Half of the payment will go to the judge that is doing the critique and the coaching, and half will go to the association for the administration of the program. This is a way we can help riders and handlers improve, and help our judges who have lost income from judging shows. Currently, at this time, we do not have a plan for virtual show series, but that is not out of the question. And I get to talk, I want to end on these last two questions, because I believe this represents the spirit of helping that this association, that we're all a part. Go ahead, sorry.
You're good. I think we all feel the same way. So, what are some ways that show management and club board members can help AHA right now?
So, first and foremost, follow the federal and state guidelines to stay safe and healthy first of all. Physical distancing is the key to getting the curve to flatten, to enable us to move forward, to return to doing what we love best. Keep a positive attitude, and this will all end someday, and we can return to the normal routine activities. Keep loving your Arabian horses, promote a positive attitude about both your horse and your association. If you'd like to donate to your Arabian Horse Association, we would love to have any donations you feel you can afford, and thank you so much for being part of our Arabian horse family.
This was another generous question that we had asked of us. "Is there any way to donate the $25 recovery fee?"
We understand that many of you are in personal financial conditions with layoffs, furloughs, and restricted travel. However, if you are in a position to help, AHA would welcome any assistance that can be provided. Yes, you can send any donation amount to the Arabian Horse Association. And I'd like to give a shout out to Lisa Abraham, who has donated for the number of horses she had and rejoined just yesterday, and this, she is not a person that shows, but she felt like she should support her association. So, any amount can be sent to the Arabian Horse Association at 10805 East Bethany Drive, Aurora, Colorado. In closing, I'd personally like to thank you all for your support during this extremely difficult time. We're all in this together, and we'll all recover together. Sorry, you guys. Thank you all for participating in this town hall, and we look to have more events in the future like this. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.